I hereby call to order the Village of Riverside Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting for Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024. Ann, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Clarkson? Are you here?
Yes.
Commissioner Pelletier?
Here.
Commissioner Brahm?
Here.
Chairperson Hennigan?
Here.
We have a quorum. Our first item of business is approval of the regular meeting minutes of September 25th. Is there a motion to approve?
Um, no.
Is there a second?
I do have a correction.
Please.
So, um, the minutes incorrectly, I believe, if I didn't say this, I meant to. It says Commissioner Brahm on the first page suggested removing the word "lot." I believe I actually suggested removing zoning.
Oh.
The word zoning.
Oh.
I read that and I was like, wait, is that so? I was like, maybe I misremembered.
I will correct that, thank you.
That's my only correction.
Great.
All right, now is there a second?
I second with that correction.
Okay. Does anyone have any other changes to the minutes? Okay, Ann, please call the roll.
Sure. Commissioner Clarkson?
Aye.
Mr. Pelletier?
Aye.
Commissioner Brahm?
Aye.
Chairperson Hennigan?
Aye.
The motion is approved. We have no audience present. We'll move on to the Village Board update.
Sure. On October 17th, the Village Board considered the Commission's request to amend the Commission's powers to include reviewing village-installed signs. This is something that you all discussed a little bit ago, and it was combined with requests from the Landscape Advisory Commission and the Preservation Commission. It was all discussed simultaneously. And for all three, well, for the all three commissions, the Board agreed that they weren't ready to make that permanent change to the powers for those commissions. They said they greatly appreciated the Commission's input, you know, had asked for input on gateway signs, and in the future, I think, my personal takeaway was the future would be requesting additional input from the commissions, but didn't want to make that a permanent change to the code. But the minutes are available if you'd like to take a look at that. But that's the only update that I have on the Board.
Thank you very much. We have no new business, and we have one item of old business, discussion regarding impervious surface standards.
Sure. So what I'd like to do is give, hopefully, a high-level view of this, and please interrupt me or stop me if you want further explanation, more detailed explanation of my overview, but we have kind of a lot to go over, so I don't want to be too specific. But just as a starting reminder, our goal here is to clarify the standards for impervious surfaces with the goal of improving stormwater management. So for this next update, what I did was took your comments from the last meeting regarding the purpose statement and the relevant terms and updated those, and establishing measurements for impervious surfaces. So those have been updated with your comments from the last meeting. The two main standards that we'll discuss today, that we haven't discussed with that much specificity previously, are the permeability requirement for semi-pervious surfaces, which is to say how much water goes through a semi-pervious surface to be acceptable for us. And the second standard is how much semi-pervious surface do you want to allow on a site. I also provided information on the Village's stormwater management standards and incentives to provide a little context for this effort. So these standards that we're discussing aren't the only type of stormwater management that we do in the village, just to provide some clarity there. So I'll skip over the existing stormwater management standards and incentives unless you'd like me to go into them in detail, and move forward to our proposed purpose statement, which was revised with the exception of the zoning versus lot issue. I apologize for the lack of clarity on that or mistake on that. The proposed purpose statement here is, as suggested, revised by the Commission, and I wanted to see if you had any additional thoughts on this.
Yeah, looks good.
I had some minor...
Oh, I didn't remove zoning in this one again.
Yeah.
Brahm's, sorry.
That was one of them.
There's a lot going on. Let me, I would strike zoning out of that first sentence.
I just had a couple more suggested changes, mostly kind of, I don't know, clarifications, but we're, I'll just read the sentence as I have it marked up and hopefully. So the purpose of impervious surface standards is to ensure that each lot can be developed to allow a reasonable level of stormwater infiltration to occur, such that stormwater runoff from any lot does not negatively impact neighboring properties, nor disproportionately burden or damage public resources in the village. So it's just eliminating some words?
Streamlining a bit.
Correct.
Okay.
I think those are good changes.
I agree. Can you read your last sentence? Just, can you, the last line?
Okay. I was gonna say...
After negatively impact.
I think there's only one sentence. Such that stormwater runoff from any lot does not negatively impact neighboring properties, nor disproportionately burden or damage public resources in the village.
I think that's fine.
Okay, if we're all comfortable with that, I'll make that change for the amendments. Okay. And for the definitions, I added the definition of stormwater runoff, started with those two definitions, and then flipped the three definitions regarding pervious, semi-pervious, and impervious surfaces. And then I heard two suggestions for the definition of impervious surface. The difference between the two definitions I underlined here and wanted to get your feedback on these and any of the other definitions.
So on pervious surfaces, and I know I wasn't here last time, so I missed this definition, but we say any non-compacted surface. And I wonder if, whether it's compacted or not is really relevant, because, you know, we go on to talk about it allows infiltration. So it seems like that whether it's compacted, because even a lawn, when you install it, they compact usually, right?
Of course.
The topsoil. So. And the other word I question is natural in reference to turf grass?
I think I was trying to differentiate between artificial turf and actual organic turf? Is organic a better word?
Maybe.
Real grass?
Yeah.
I take your point about compacted, though, because we don't provide standards for compaction, so whether it's compacted or not, it's considered a pervious surface?
Right.
If it's not...
So should we get rid of non-compacted and just put any surface?
I would support that.
Yeah, especially if we leave the non-compacted dirt, I think that accomplishes what we were looking for there. So if we get rid of the first non-compacted, I think we're okay.
And I hate to open up a can of worms, but I have been doing some research with regard to pervious and porous, which is another word that I've learned. I mean, I knew it before, but now I know in relation to pavers. And there are 100% porous pavers out there. So would those be considered pervious? Or can we consider those pervious? If they're 100%, aren't they just as good as, like, natural grass?
So I think my understanding is, and I've seen the calculations that show paver installations that allow the infiltration of water, such that in an engineer's definition, they would say, oh, well, this is effectively pervious. I would hesitate to define that as a pervious surface since we're trying to regulate that, and I would call that a semi-pervious surface. So I think there's, I would say, the stormwater definition of allowing a certain amount of water through and a certain rate through versus it as a surface, if that makes any sense. So I think we're trying to, to some extent, regulate stormwater runoff, but also regulate the amount of hardscape that's on properties. And so if you said simply, all we're trying to do is regulate stormwater, as long as a site met certain stormwater standards, you could put whatever kind of surface you want that allowed that water infiltration. If we can define the different types of surfaces as pervious, semi-pervious, and impervious, we can also manage, to some extent, how much hardscape we get on properties.
So by regulating hardscape, are we really talking about an entirely different issue? Are we talking about aesthetics as opposed to handling a stormwater runoff issue? I mean, is the purpose to regulate hardscape?
I think it has, they, to some, to my opinion, they go somewhat hand-in-hand. I think my understanding is that while we don't necessarily want to specify what folks do with a part of their property that isn't covered in an impervious or maybe even semi-pervious surface, there should be some amount of pervious surface that's natural on a property, and we achieve that by having the hard limit of impervious surface. So for an R1A district, we have 50%. That includes building and driveways and walkways, and the other 50% is natural open space. You know, we could talk about those percentages if we want, you know, changing those percentages and maybe, you know, achieving that in a different way, but I think the purpose of these regulations is primarily stormwater management and to allow folks to put in a semi-pervious surface, either to have that, you know, or as a way to address non-conforming sites. But part of that is aesthetics, I think, and is having some natural space on the sites. That's my two cents.
I think related to that, something that I've been thinking about throughout this discussion is, while it is very stormwater-focused, there are other environmental benefits to naturally-planted areas that aren't achieved with man-made materials. So I know that, you know, our discussion has been very much about the stormwater, but the aesthetics is another side issue, but the environmental benefits of natural areas, I think, is something that we don't want to forget here and make it, I say, I don't think we want to achieve something that will allow people to replace all of their lawns with pervious pavers or other materials, such as that, I don't think that's a net benefit to the village as a whole. So even if it's not called out in the purpose statements, in my mind, that's, I think, one of the benefits to doing this.
I'd also, I also think that, you know, our, by our definition at least, of semi-pervious surface, it's not just about the perviousness or porousness of the surface, it's also that it retains water underneath. So it's not just, you know, the material on top, it's also the structure that it's sitting on and its ability to retain.
And I appreciate you pointing out that definition, because in looking at this, it looks like if we do decide to move forward with the recommendation of the Village Engineer and specify that a semi-pervious surface can retain that first inch of stormwater, we'll need to call that out in the definition instead of saying it retains some amount of stormwater. We can say specifically the first inch of, you know, water during a rain event to provide more specificity in the definition.
Well, oh yeah, and some, and retains. I think we also should change the word "or" to "and." So it's any improved area that allows some amount of stormwater infiltration "and retains," because it needs to do both.
And if we do have that one-inch standard, maybe that could also appear in the impervious surface definition, that it, you know, retains less than one inch.
Sure. Is there any preference? I'm sorry.
You can't say more than one inch on one definition and less than one, because what if you have an inch?
About equal to or greater than one inch? And then less than?
And I noticed that the semi-pervious surface definition has pea gravel as an example. Does the village allow pea gravel? I thought that we're prohibiting pea gravel.
Pea gravel is not prohibited. Pea gravel for, is limited in terms of driveways, that you might have heard that as a discussion that's come up in the past. We do allow, I believe, this was slightly before my time, so my understanding may be off, but my understanding is that we allowed pea gravel for some of the historic properties, had pea gravel driveways, and so we do have a provision in that for, in the code, to allow pea gravel driveway. And some, I've seen, not very many folks use it as a walkway material, but I've seen some.
Yeah, I didn't want to include that as an example and then later on in the code have it restricted.
No, yeah. We're not prohibiting it elsewhere in the code, fortunately. Is there any response to option one or two for impervious surface definitions? Any feelings on that?
I like the second half of option two. I mean, I like the first half too, but I like drain, seep, filter, or pass. I sort of like the specificity there.
See, I was gonna say that if we were to pick option two, that we should not repeat drain, seep, and filter or pass within the paragraph.
Oh, because it's, it's actually the same sentence, I think.
It's a very long sentence.
It's a very long sentence. Okay, I agree. We don't want to say it twice. I know we mean it.
So as a suggestion, if the Board was inclined to pick option two, that, that second, that last part of the paragraph, I would, I would put after water features and other similar surfaces that do not meet the definition of a pervious or semi-pervious surface. And I think that would be consistent with your impervious surface measurements.
Yep.
Language.
Yeah, that's...
But that's only if the Board was inclined to pick option two.
I think that's another, a clear way of doing it. If it's not one of these two, that's what it is. It's this third option. Do we have a definition of pea gravel?
We do not. Should we include a definition of pea gravel?
I think we should consider it, especially if we're counting it as a semi-pervious surface, to make it clear what we're talking about, you know, something with high porosity, open-grated gravel, no fines, mixed in.
Okay. Isn't, isn't pea gravel a...
Industry term?
An industry term?
I believe it is.
Therefore, kind of an industry standard?
I believe. We can also define it. There's no, I don't think there's any harm. I can see what I can find in terms of a definition.
I think no fines is the primary.
Yeah, agreed.
Yeah, just to make sure, because I've, I see people who have a different concept of what gravel means and pea gravel is whatever they want it to be sometimes.
Oh, really? Oh, okay.
Google says it is a type of gravel made up of small rounded stones that are usually about the size of a pea, or 3/8 inch in diameter.
Sure.
So there is like a...
We can specify, well, I think if we had a, someone who wanted to use pea gravel as a semi-pervious surface in their construction detail, we would specify the material wouldn't include fines.
Yeah.
Pea gravel is often confused for crushed stone. They are different.
Yeah, I'd just like to see us add the definition.
Okay.
I don't think it hurts anything to have it in there.
I don't think it hurts anyone.
Okay.
So does everyone like option one or two?
I guess the other option would be to go with option one and then keep the seep, drain, and filter, that's already in there, but then that doesn't accommodate Commissioner Brahm's edits to the end of that sentence, so.
I know they're not greatly different, but I did hear, I did hear them both and thought it was appropriate to present them both.
I don't have a strong feeling.
I don't have a strong feeling either.
Could we try to combine the two?
Absolutely.
Option three, just any surface or ground cover, and then go with option two from there?
That restricts the ability to... Sure. And then on the last, if we're keeping drain, seep, filter, pass in the beginning, on the back end of that, use Commissioner Brahm's suggestion to finish it up.
Yep.
Perfect. I will do it.
Excellent.
Okay. Moving on to standards, we discussed impervious surface standards and measurements previously. We made a couple of changes, one of which I did forget to actually make to the memo, and I apologize for that. A sharp-eyed staff member noticed that in reviewing my memo. So we did change architectural features to eaves and overhangs. We specified that the decks must meet all three criteria. We changed the definition of miscellaneous surfaces, but in case you were concerned, I did notice that I did forget to remove "not" from the, one of the first criteria of deck. So it should say, "The deck is uncovered." So I will remove the "not" for the public hearing. I apologize for that. But otherwise, this is the same as we reviewed before.
So we're on impervious surface measurements?
We are.
Is that what we're looking at?
Yep. We're in section five, at the top of, bottom of page three, top of page four, and these are the same measurements that we discussed last time, with the, with the exception of the things that I mentioned. This was changed to eaves and overhangs. In decks, we specify that decks must meet all of the following standards, and we'll remove that "not."
So with regard to impervious surface measurements, my suggestion would be to include wherever you say, such as driveways, parking, and sidewalks, number three, I would put pathways that do not meet the definition of a pervious or semi-pervious surface.
I will include it.
I mean, I don't know if there's a driveway that...
Well, but sidewalks and pathways, certainly.
And driveways.
Yeah, driveway.
Sure. I have one. Semi-pervious.
But pervious as well, just to be, so wherever you have semi-pervious, we should put exempt from, determined to be, for those surfaces exempt, determined to be pervious or semi-pervious.
Like a mulch path or something like that? Sure.
So that would be for three and four, the driveways, parking, sidewalks, and pathways, as well as recreation structures?
And then also in the introductory sentence?
Determined to be pervious or semi-pervious.
Oh, so do we really need it anywhere else but in the first, in the opening sentence?
My inclination is no, because it's a semicolon.
Yeah. So it applies to everything below.
So instead of adding pervious, we could delete all of the semi-pervious after the introductory sentence?
So the, this portion of section three that do not meet the definition, we could just stop at pathways? Well, okay.
Yeah, that does make that sentence a little funny, that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine either way on that.
Yes, I wouldn't say it, that do not meet does not need to be there, because it already says it above.
Agreed.
Right. Okay.
All right.
Okay. Any other concerns about this section?
Do we have a maximum allowable height for decks?
Oh, gosh, it's the first, it can't be any higher than the elevation of the first floor of the structure.
But, but we do allow for a deck over a walkout basement?
Yes.
Okay. I've seen some, a decking system product that's installed on the underside of a deck that's intended to take any stormwater that comes through the deck and redirect it elsewhere, really finishing the underside of the deck?
Okay.
In which case, where, where those are used, the water doesn't go through, so it's not really going from, you know, above the deck, through the deck into the pervious surface underneath. So I'm just trying to think if there's a way to word that that makes sense, if that's even something that would be concerned about.
We could just add a "D" to the decks that meet all of the following standards and say that they can't have...
Or no, I'm not sure, catchment system is the right term. I can ask our building inspector if he's familiar with the product that would be used. I don't think that I've seen it on an inspection or in a plan review, but we can, we can have a catch-all that says basically something that doesn't interrupt the flow of water from between the deck spaces to the pervious ground below.
Yeah, that would be the intention. I think, I think Trex makes a product called the Rain Escape or something like that?
I am certain it's out there, I just haven't seen it.
Yeah. Deck drain.
The number two, the eaves and overhangs?
Yes.
What was the impetus for that kind of addition? I mean, I guess I kind of understand what the concern is, but I don't know, it seems...
I think precision. I think to be as precise as we can about what's measured and what's not, because it's not, there's no provisions in the code currently about how you measure, so I wanted to be clear about that. I'm certain that I saw in a different code about how to measure, oh, yes, about how to measure impervious surfaces.
And they eliminated, they, there was concern that eaves somehow prevent infiltration.
I think it was to be clear, you know, to say that basically, that you don't have to be concerned about a standard eve on a building?
Yeah.
Because I think, you know, water can easily get past that. If you've got an extreme overhang, or, you know, you've got some really deep eaves on some houses, that could interfere with water infiltration, therefore render the ground beneath to be somewhat impervious.
Inaccessible?
Inaccessible to the water.
Yeah.
I suppose it doesn't need to be included. I do enjoy more precise codes if possible, but that's, you know, just so there's no question in the future. But I take your point.
I like having it in there, because on a, on a plat of survey that you're looking at to do these calculations, an eve generally isn't going to be included on there unless it's unusually deep?
Yes.
In which case it often is shown on the plat of survey. So I think just for consistency and explaining why, how you got to the calculation, I think that might be helpful.
But it also kind of, it's basically stating that if, let's say, you have a 24-inch eve, then that whole 24 inches goes against your impervious.
That's what I'm saying.
As opposed to...
Mm-hmm.
Right. Why wouldn't you kind of allow 18 inches of eve and maybe the balances? I'm just thinking of Frank Lloyd Rice houses that have, you know, an eve that, that there's, it's like, I don't know, you're punishing people for having large eaves.
We're not trying to punish... We're not trying to punish.
I'm large.
So I want to avoid that.
Right.
But I would like to address eaves, if we can.
Yeah. So I guess I might suggest, and I don't feel necessarily strongly, but that, you know, 18 inches of eaves are, can be considered, or could maybe not be considered in the impervious. So if you're greater than 18, anything greater than 18 inches is, contributes to the impervious.
So theoretically, for it to be in that situation at the end of that sentence, and the first 18 inches may be subtracted, instead of may not be subtracted.
Right.
With the assumption that if it's, if you consider a more standard design house with an 18-inch eve, there's some angle rain that's going to get under the eve, so presumably the same effect will happen if you have a larger overhang.
Right.
That makes sense. Sure.
I think that sounds good.
Okay. Any other concerns about impervious surface measurements? No? Okay. All right. We'll move on to permeability requirements. So I'll try to be as brief as possible, but we've looked at, and currently what the villages' code says is that you can consider the coefficient of permeability for semi-pervious surfaces. It doesn't provide for what the coefficient, a minimum coefficient of permeability should be, and it doesn't specify an amount. So those are the two things that we're trying to get at in terms of our measurements, aside from defining things. So a lot of codes that I've looked at have a percentage or a type of material verified by the village engineer to be acceptable. And in terms of what that acceptability is, there's not a universal standard. So in taking a look at that, and some of them have the construction requirements, I think are very standard for when you would construct a paver system. In any case, you're going to have an aggregate layer, you're going to have, you know, pavers on top, whether you put in something, like, I think it's polymeric sand, between the two to prevent weed growth and, you know, that would keep water out or not. You're going to have some sort of base system, and that if you have the ability to store water between the pavers, it's going to be stored in that paver system. So in speaking with Dan Lynch, with Christopher Burke, who works as a village engineer, I kind of explained, you know, what I'd found, and said, you know, what our goal was, and he said, you know, really if the goal is to manage stormwater, he said, why, you know, he said he would really recommend considering, requiring that whatever semi-pervious surface that you select has to meet the standard, that it has to retain the first inch of stormwater during a rain event. That's a industry standard, it's based on the MWRD standard, it's measurable, and it makes, I think, a lot of sense in considering it. And you can use it on any soil type. We don't have to worry about soil types, because as long as it captures that first inch, however long it takes to percolate through the ground is how long ever it takes. So that's, that's our recommendation, is that we would require, and the way that would work is basically someone who wants to install a semi-pervious surface would submit a grading permit. We have a system set up for that. The grading permits are reviewed by the village engineer. They would verify whatever type of material it is. So artificial grass, pea gravel, pavers, bricks, whatever you want to use, that it meets that first inch of retention within the area of the semi-pervious surface, and that would be approved as part of the grading permit. And then, in terms of inspection, I think there needs to be two inspections, based on what the village engineer recommended. The first being to make sure that the excavation is to the required depth, so there would be an inspection at that point. And then a second inspection before the top surface is installed, to make sure that the base surfaces were installed correctly. Then we'll have our building inspector give the final inspection, like you would for any other kind of permit, and then at that point, we would say that pervious, impervious, semi-pervious surface is installed correctly.
So I feel like we need two requirements. We need the permeability of the surface treatment, and also the storage value or volume of the aggregate base. Because, you know, if you, if you only require that it, and not that anyone would do this, because it wouldn't make any sense, but had someone made the excavation and put in the, let's say, the open grated gravel, they could still put concrete on top and that gravel would do nothing, right? Because you need the permeability of the surface.
Sure. We can specify that it's a permeable surface with a one-inch storage. We can put a little more specificity in the definition to provide for that.
Yeah. But we don't, I mean, I don't know if we need then a permeability, because the permeability of the surface is how much water can pass through.
Sure.
And I don't know if most products have that as part of their specification, you know, like this paver is, I'm not even sure if there is a definition of permeability, if you have found one, or do we have one?
We don't, we didn't include one.
Yeah.
Yeah. Would be acceptable to say that the, to leave some of that, instead of specifying a permeability level of the material on top, to allow the village engineer with the understanding of the goal is to have the water move through the surface and store one inch of it, to make the professional determination that the surface that's being proposed will achieve that.
So we're leaving, we're putting it kind of in the hands of the, in the review?
I think so, to allow a reasonable estimation, based on a professional, taking a look at the detail. I would hope that we wouldn't have an issue where someone's trying to sneak something by us. You know, if they did, I, you know, trust that we're going to get a professional review. And that does allow for, you know, taking a look at this, one of the considerations that I had was, we don't have a lot of folks who are going to, on their own, of their own volition, excavate to that level and do the work themselves. We have some folks who would do that on their own, and I think you can do this. It doesn't need to be a drawing by an engineer, it just needs to be approved by our engineer. So if you are ambitious and you have the time and tools, I think a homeowner could achieve this themselves.
And then I also wonder if Burke couldn't come up with a standard section that would accommodate the one inch, right? If it's, whatever, this number 57 stone, you know, has to be clean, no fines, this depth.
I'd like to provide that.
Yeah.
Not necessarily if it's part of the code, but have that available for folks.
Yeah.
You know, when they apply, say, here's an example. If you don't want to think about it, and you're willing to accept our drawing, here's one for free you can use.
Right.
Yeah. Those are easily accessible, and we can provide those.
I really like what you've come up with in this section overall, because this is something that could get incredibly detailed and very, very complicated, but it's been handled such a way that I think simplifies it for everybody, and I'd really like to get around the issue of soil type, which would just be so messy to deal with, on a site-by-site, and really specific location-by-location basis, so, yeah, I'm very happy with this section.
Oh, good. Okay.
Okay. In terms of materials, the, everything we've discussed, I think is acceptable. The only caveat that I would say, and this was something that I was going to discuss with Dan Lynch when we were discussing it, and he brought it up first, so, you know, great minds, but he said, you know, just thinking about, if someone, and it's a rare case when someone, and I'm not aware of any permeable, or porous, excuse me, porous concrete or porous asphalt driveways that have been installed on a residential property in the village. I'm sure there have been, I'm just not aware of them. It's a rare material to use. You'd have to have a motivated property owner who wants to do that, but in the rare event that someone does want to do that, I would hesitate to allow the use of asphalt, just with the likelihood that a future property owner may not realize or appreciate the fact that it can't be seal-coated, and seal-coated. And since we don't require a building permit for that, the village wouldn't have any knowledge of that being done. So I would recommend that we eliminate porous asphalt as a semi-pervious surface.
I think that's a good practical consideration.
Agreed.
In terms of maintenance, I think, as we discussed during the last meeting, I think it's unrealistic to expect consistent maintenance of these products over time, especially over with different property owners. So I think accepting the fact that there will be some loss of the ability to store stormwater over time, if it's properly installed, it should be fairly, it should do a fairly well, a fairly good job. I did look at other communities. None of the other communities require maintenance as part of their code. There was one website that I saw that mentioned biannual inspections, and I kind of checked in on that and said, hey, you know, what's your process on that? And they said, well, you know, if there is a complaint, we look into it. And so I think, I would say, given that our understanding of the realist, how realistic it is that these will be maintained, we should factor that into our consideration of how much we want to allow on a site. So we'll use that to inform maintenance, but I would not recommend putting maintenance requirements in our code. I think that would be difficult. Moving on to how much of the surface we want to allow. So I provided a lot of information, I'd like to distill it as much as I can, but I wanted to show my works, so that you understand where I came from, in trying to calculate this. So most communities that I saw allowed 20% to 25% of what I would call a discount code, which I think is, or discount rate, which is a term that I've seen before, basically saying, if you use, for example, I used a site, if you, if you're allowed to have 100 square feet of impervious surface, a 20% discount rate would allow you 125 square feet of semi-pervious surface. So the effect is, of your discount rate, is that you're increasing the amount of hardscape that you can have on a site. So thinking about what that means in practical terms, obviously, I don't think that most folks are going to rip out all their impervious surface and put in semi-pervious surface to maximize. However, there could be, realistically, someone, especially if you're doing a redevelopment of a site, might say, I would really like to maximize what I can do out here, let's consider semi-pervious surfaces in our new site. So thinking about what that might look like at its extreme end, I did some calculations. What I did was I took, for all of the zoning districts, the most average property I could find, so looking at our research on impervious surface standards, for each district, I found the average size property with the average amount of building on it, and then calculated what the remainder of the impervious surface coverage for that site would be. So if you consider an R1A site, you've got, 50% of the site can be impervious, within that 50% impervious, 30% can be building coverage. So given those calculations and our averages, I found some examples, and I did some calculations. So this is kind of what it distills down to, and I can go into the details for each calculation, if you'd like, but this kind of holds true for the sites, these percentages related to these percentages, and this holds through across the zoning districts. With this discount rate, so 25% discount rate, basically the increase in hardscape on the site, if the entire site is redeveloped with a semi-pervious surface, is about 9.7%. So as the discount rate goes down, obviously, the amount of increased coverage goes down. So I can, but I think, I think the most helpful way to look at this is visually, and I included these examples in the end of your packet. So I took an example from the R1A district, which is our largest district. This is a property on Gage Road, and this is the existing property. So this is the black, the outline here is the house, the, this is the garage, and the gray surfaces are the existing impervious surfaces. Now, they're actually under their 50% max, so this is existing as-is. And then to show you what the 50% max is, I increased on here the size of the garage, and I increased the size of the driveway. So as-is, this is 50%. And then, considering the discount rates, I did some examples. So this is a 25% discount rate on the same site, and the orange area is the increased surface that would be added to the site. So if you consider all of these surfaces, with the exception of the house and the garage, to now be semi-pervious surfaces, with a 25% discount rate, this area in orange could be added to the site in terms of hardscape. And then I did the same for a 20% discount rate. So this adds 665 square feet to the site. And then a 15% discount rate, which further reduces that area to 470 square feet, and a 10% discount rate, and now we're down to 290 square feet. So those are the four that I calculated, and I wanted to see your response and thoughts about what you thought about a potential discount rate.
I'll just start by saying I really appreciate you putting together these exhibits, because that's, I think, the hardest thing, is to visualize what this really means on a property. I think, for me, I liked how the 20% discount rate looked, because we definitely want it to be enough of a discount that it encourages people to choose semi-pervious surfaces, but we also don't want to drastically change the appearance of our neighborhoods, so the 25% just seemed to be a little, a little much, in my opinion. And of course, this is all just subjective, but I like the 20%.
I would ditto 20% or 15. I felt like those were, because the 15 is the same size as the garage.
Right. Oh, sure. Let me pull that up.
So...
Yeah, very similar.
Just sort of playing this out, let's say that we have properties that, and Riverside is a lovely community, and it has windy streets, and as part of those windy streets, we have a lot of pie-shaped properties. So we have, I think there are more than what one would think of properties that have not a lot of back space, not a lot of space. Cars are getting bigger, or smaller, or whatever, however you want to look at it, but, you know, people, people need their driveways. And, you know, right now, we've got restrictions that driveways can't be, you know, they newly-built driveways have to be a foot off of the lot line, or at least a foot off the lot line. There's not a lot of space for some of these people. So my question to you is that if we say 20%, is there a method for people with unusual-shaped lots to perhaps petition for an allowance? I mean, would that be...
Would they be, would they be locating?
Would that be a variation? I mean, can they, are we prohibiting any variations?
No, you can...
Would that be an acceptable, can somebody come in and say, hey, I've got a garage here, and I don't have a lot of room in my backyard, and can I get a variation for impervious surfaces?
Of course. And the benefit of having the standards in the code is that if the commission, and then ultimately the village board, wanted to grant a variation, and wanted to have some concession on the homeowner as part of that, if part of that was, we would like to, and not speaking directly to driveways, but if, you know, we would like to approve this addition, or this, you know, encroachment into a setback, we noticed that you're over your impervious surface coverage, can you replace some of that hardscape with a semi-pervious surface? That could be a benefit of having those standards, is there could be some accommodation for, within a variation request. But certainly, anyone can apply for a variation for any of the standards in the code, including impervious surface coverage, if they wanted to.
I agree with the 20%.
20?
Yeah.
I'm okay with the 25, just because I think of those, those, those properties that are smaller.
Okay.
And perhaps could benefit more from having impervious surfaces.
And speaking of smaller properties, one of the items I did want to mention, and that we did talk about at the last meeting, was our districts where we do generally have smaller lots, R2, R3, R4. And I mentioned this in the staff report, and this is in this non-conforming standards. So currently, in just a little bit of information, if we're aware of a zoning violation, we immediately address it, especially if there is active construction, so we address those violations. We are aware that there are non-conforming sites when we do compliances, when properties are sold or transferred, and we do note that as part of the compliance, but what the zoning code currently says is, effectively, you can't increase a structure that's not conforming, structure meaning in this case, like hardscape. You can't increase that amount... that amount. You can shift things around, but you can't increase it. You don't have to decrease it, but you can't increase it. In looking at trying to address that, or whether we want to change that, one of the things, you know, I was considering was the standards for the R2, R3, and R4 districts. So you can have a greater amount of impervious surface coverage on those lots because they're smaller. What I found was, for the properties that, where I was able to find a survey and do the calculations, more of those properties are non-conforming than properties in the R1, or in the RA and RAA districts, which I expected. But the number was, was higher than I thought it would be. What I'd like to do is, instead of changing our standards for non-conforming, to address non-conformities, what I'd like to do is establish the standards that we're proposing for impervious surfaces. Those would apply to all the zoning districts. And in the meantime, and try to get that, this process to the finish line. What I'd like to do is, in a future set of text amendments, after we've addressed front-loaded garages, which is our next to-do, is to take a look at those R2, R3, R4 districts, and make sure that we're comfortable with the impervious surface coverage requirements that we have, given how they're actually developed. So take a look at, here's what we're seeing on the ground versus here's what the standards are. We have these impervious surface standards now. If someone wanted to come into compliance, could they? You know, could they come into closer compliance with a semi-pervious surface? Or should we possibly consider raising those limits, so that folks don't need to get a variation if they want to, they wouldn't need to get a variation if they want to replace something, because they can keep like-for-like. But, you know, if someone is currently in compliance, and they're looking at their neighbor saying, well, gee, they get to have this big patio, I'd like to have the same thing, can they achieve that? So those kind of two topics, addressing non-conformities and addressing the coverage in R2, R3, R4, are things that I'd like to leave for our next set of text amendments, but hoping that we can agree on, or come to some sort of consensus from the commission on how you'd like to move forward for coverage and definitions and our purpose statement, which is what I would bring forward to you before you in a public hearing for our November meeting. And it seems like, for the most part, Commissioner Brown was interested in 25%, Commissioner Palatier, Chairperson Henigan said 20%, and I think Chairman, or, sorry, Commissioner Carlson, you said 15 or 20%. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. For the purposes of our public hearing, I would recommend we select 20%, since that's the number that everyone, at least three or four are in agreement on. And you can, obviously, during the public hearing, if there's more commissioners, change the recommendation to 25%.
Should we go 22 and 1/2, just to keep it interesting?
You can just select whatever number you'd like.
Just to make the math hard for you.
I can try to do that math. I can try to.
I just like to split the difference sometimes.
Are there any other questions, comments, concerns on this, or are we comfortable at this point moving forward for a public hearing for November?
Going back to the definitions.
Sure.
I'm comfortable moving forward. But going back to the definitions for impervious surface measurements, paragraph three, driveways, it just has gravel. I hate to quibble, but should we be putting pea gravel, as long as we're defining it? Or are we okay with gravel? What's the difference?
I believe the concern, and I appreciate you bringing this up, because I'd like the commission's input, is, the concern is if we just have, if, for example, staff did a compliance inspection and saw gravel driveway, I don't know what's under the gravel driveway and how it was installed. So I don't know that it would meet the definition of a semi-pervious surface. And with the compaction, I don't know that it would meet the definition of a pervious surface. So my inclination would be to measure that as in, anything that I don't know what's underneath it, and/or someone's been driving on it, or, you know, vehicles have been driving on it for a time, my thought would be, we would consider that as an impervious surface. But I'm open to your comments and thoughts on that.
So do we always assume that pea gravel is always semi-pervious?
I would assume, if I don't know how it was installed, and I can't determine in the field that there's nothing, you know, in some cases, there aren't too many pea gravel surfaces out there. But if you can't determine what's underneath it, my inclination would be to consider it as impervious, because I don't know that it's semi-pervious or pervious.
So then should we remove pea gravel as an example in the definition of semi-pervious surface?
I think it can be a semi-pervious surface if we know how it's installed.
Okay.
So I wanted to leave an allowance for that. So if you had a historical property with a pea gravel drive, and you wanted to remove it and re-put in, reinstall it, and we had the specifications for that as part of the permit, I would absolutely consider that a semi-pervious surface if it met this construction specifications.
So there is a distinction between gravel and pea gravel, and you purposely took out pea before the gravel.
In, in number, in three?
And I'm okay with that. I just wanted to point it out.
In, in?
In paragraph three of pervious surface measurements.
Under impervious?
Impervious surface measurements, driveway, parking, sidewalks, and pathway, you have gravel and paved driveways.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I suppose that absolutely could say gravel, comma, pea gravel, and paved driveways.
Okay.
Because the second half of that is, that do not meet the definition of a semi-pervious surface. And I think the second half of that one is important in that one, to specify, because we do have, you know, pea gravel driveways, or I guess potentially gravel driveways that could meet the definition, if it's installed according to our standards.
Do we need to say gravel and paved driveways? Or can we just say driveways?
I think I was trying to leave allowance for porous concrete. I guess that doesn't meet the definition. No, I think that's a good point. It's, could say gravel and pea gravel driveways.
Because, you know, in the beginning, you say, okay, if you can prove that it's semi-pervious, then it doesn't apply. But otherwise, driveways, sidewalks, walkways, all that.
Sure.
Are impervious.
I also, just as a note, do enjoy, or do like to have the, that do not meet the definition of a semi-pervious surface. I think the reason I included that in number three was, sometimes when folks are reading through a list of things in a, in a code, they tend to forget the start exception. And if you kind of tuck it in the middle, it's just a reminder, like, in case they miss that from the start. But I think that could say gravel and pea gravel driveways, whether or not we keep the second half that don't meet the standards, or that do not meet the definition of a semi-pervious surface, excuse me.
Yeah, if we keep that, I think we would just go back to Melinda's suggestion of adding pervious or semi-pervious surface.
Keep, keep the second, keep the.
Yeah, if we keep that.
Keep the end of this, and just specify of a pervious or semi-pervious surface.
Right.
Sure.
Can we review that again? I'm not sure.
So I think the, well, if that's the case, if we're, sorry, just kind of thinking out loud here, for number three, if we're looking at, because there could be, if we're allowing for a porous concrete driveway, someone might consider that a paved driveway. We want to specify it meets the definition of a pervious, semi-pervious surface.
The more I think about it, I would like to just have it say driveways, not gravel and paved.
That actually does solve quite a few problems for us, huh?
Yeah.
That's great. Let's say driveways. And then the, the last half of that sentence would be, that do not meet the definition of a pervious or semi-pervious surface.
So driveways, and then also take out the gravel and paved before walkways?
Walkways, yeah.
Yep. Yeah, that does simplify things quite a bit.
So then we're leaving in number three and number four, that do not meet definition of semi-pervious, impervious?
Yes, definition of a pervious or semi-pervious surface.
Despite the fact that it's already stated above.
For redundancy, as a practitioner, I realize it's redundant. I realize it's less clean. Practically, sometimes it's helpful.
And so then, okay.
It doesn't have to be in there. We can remove it.
Okay, no, it's fine. I just thought there might be other ones that we would need to, because once you do that.
I know.
Once you have to always.
I take your point.
But the water features are, you know, swimming pools, hot tubs, none of those, I don't, I don't think those require that.
Yeah, I think the other four categories are different enough.
Agreed.
Agreed.
I promise I'm done. I'm not going to go back.
No, 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 I.
To the beginning.
Appreciate all the commentary, because I think we're going to have a very strong code at the end.
Very clear.
Hopefully. Hopefully very clear. Are there any other comments? Or are we feeling comfy moving forward with the public hearing for the next meeting?
I'm comfortable moving forward, but I have a question.
Of course.
On page eight, item number eight, we are repeating the definition of semi-pervious surface.
Oh, gosh. Oh, I think I was trying to summarize specifically the standards that we are considering today for semi-pervious surfaces. I apologize for the redundancy.
No, it's okay. I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't missing something.
No, you're not missing anything. No.
So we're using what we, from the first page.
We've, we're clear. I will, I will use the definition of semi-pervious surface that we've hammered out today. The one thing that I wanted, and I appreciate you bringing this up, this was just a test language that we can add regarding the allowable amount of semi-pervious surface. Oh, no, this, okay, this does address the first inch of storm water. Thank you. So in this case, let's see, let me track back to semi-pervious surface. Apologize for jumping back and forth. So I believe, I don't have both definitions at once, but I think the operable part of this definition was the first inch of stormwater.
Right.
First inch of stormwater in a rainfall event, and as determined by the village engineer.
I think the way it's written, it's just, it says, "A surface that retains the first inch of stormwater." It would need to add that a surface that allows infiltration of stormwater and retains the first inch of stormwater.
Those first two, those two points, yes.
To make sure those two points.
Yes.
Are made. And then at the end, where it kind of lists things.
Mm-hmm. So we had the, yep, that was to exclude specifically porous asphalt.
Okay. Right, semi-pervious, or is it? So semi-pervious surfaces include but are not limited to
Mm-hmm.
All of these things, and then if we can add with the appropriate underlayment, because all of those are just talking about the surface and not
Mm-hmm.
The underlayment, or whatever, structure below it.
That's the take-home message for me, is that you have, the layer underneath is, is important.
Sure. And so it could be with the, the underlayment or structure, substructure that retains the first inch of stormwater in a rainfall event.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So it'd be semi-pervious surfaces allow the infiltration of water, include these types, and then, again, retain the first inch of stormwater.
I think we're saying that the semi-pervious surfaces include these materials as long as they also have the appropriate.
Sure. They have, they can be, they have to be that material, but also they have to meet the permeability standard and the storage requirement. And then the, the second half of that was trying to get at our, the amount that we're allowing. So this was the 20%, 20 point, 23, 22.35%, whatever number we want to bring. I'll bring some in that neighborhood, just for, just for reference. So how are we feeling about, it's very simple language, but are there any concerns about this as a starting point for what we bring to the public hearing?
I like that it's simple language.
I think, just wordsmithing my own suggestion, I would say the second sentence, possibly I would change to, properties that currently exceed, or exceed as of the date of the adoption of the ordinance, that exceed. And then I would want to make clear that if a site is redeveloped with a, with a, if the house is redeveloped in the site, I would expect the property to come into compliance with the standards. At that point, you're redeveloping enough of the site that if you have, if you exceed the impervious surface standards, it's time to go back to zero and bring into compliance. So I want to add language to that effect.
Do we have that somewhere in the code, that if you're, you're making a change that is, it's either like a percent cost of value, something along those lines?
I'll double-check. I'm not, I'm not aware of one off the top of my head, but I'll double-check to make sure that we don't have one that's existing. Just make sure that we're being consistent in the code.
Yeah.
If we don't, I think we ought to.
Right.
I think this has been very well considered. Thank you so much for your comments. I really appreciate it.
Thank you for all your work on this, Ann. I think after.
Thank you.
Our nine discussions of impervious surfaces.
You know what?
I think we've covered it.
They can't say that we didn't think about it. And just a note, if I might, before we, as we wrap up, because I noticed this before we, as in preparing my notes, our meeting on the 26th is on a Tuesday due to the Thanksgiving holiday. I think there was a conflict with the, one of the school districts meetings. So we moved that to a Tuesday. So just please note the next meeting.
It's the 26th.
Yep, Tuesday, the 26th.
Oh, November 26th.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Does anyone have any information to share? In that case, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.